Gentlemen, welcome to Lundary Town Council meeting. This is an emergency meeting called by the town council to address the tax rate that was delivered by DRA to us in the last few days. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please be seated. First, I want to start off the meeting to thank everyone who worked the election last Tuesday. It was a record-setting election for Lundary. It had almost 16,000 voters. There were hundreds of people involved. Thank you to the schools, the fire department, the police department, to Public Works, to everyone who touched any part of the election. It was greatly appreciated and contributed to a great success. We did have one small glitch that resulted in having to rerun all 16,000 ballots, starting at 11 o'clock at night by half a dozen, by about 10 people, which was Yeoman's work. Thank you, Deb. And the, and have those done by 3:30 in the morning. So New Hampshire, I guess, led the way in getting their results in. And everything was reported to the Secretary of State by early morning. And that my understanding is, is that at 4:00 AM, ABC and NBC walked in to interview the town moderator and the town clerk about the memory card loss. And they looked good on camera at 4:00 AM. So, thank you, and it's all very much appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, can we say thanks to the vets since this is Veterans Day?
Absolutely. Tom, as a veteran, why don't you go ahead and take care of that?
Well, just wanted to say thank you to all the vets who put their lives on the line and helped keep this country free and able to continue this experiment that was started a couple hundred years ago. So, thank you to all the vets out there. Appreciate it.
And thank you to them. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I had the opportunity last Sunday to attend and speak at the 50th anniversary celebration for the Lundary Lions Club here in town. And I believe you have a proclamation in front of you. I don't know if you want to maybe just briefly read that. I did have the opportunity to read it at the event, but just maybe to recognize the contributions of the Lions.
The vice chair hasn't signed it yet. Can we wait and do this at the normal meeting on Monday?
Absolutely, sure.
So, we'll give him the opportunity to sign it, and then we'll do it on Monday.
Sounds great.
Fantastic, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we have one and one and only item this evening. This is a review of the current tax rate that's been delivered to us by DRA and discussion about how we may or may not want to contribute to lowering that rate by use of the undesignated fund balance. So, who's presenting?
Well, I will present initially, though I'd ask Justin to come up as well as there may be questions Justin can more readily answer. Before, you have before you a handout of the preliminary rate that DRA gives us for tax year, for calendar year 2020. And it just so happens that the rate we got is, in fact, 2020. Very appropriate. That is up from 1939 in 2019. And you'll see on the front page there that the way this roughly breaks out is the town rate is $4.75. That is up from $4.56. The county rate is 86 cents. That is down from 88 cents. The school rate is $12.66. That is up from $12.04. And the state education is $1.93. That's up from $1.91. So, as I mentioned, that totals 2020. What we have the opportunity to do here prior to finalizing the rate with DRA is we can use some of our undesignated fund balance to help offset the town tax rate. This is something that we have done in previous years, which I believe you're going to speak about, Mr. Chairman. But it is something that we can do. We don't have to do it. We haven't done it. Most years, we do not do it. But this year, we had talked about doing it, given the economic crisis of the COVID pandemic. I would just note that while we ended fiscal year 20, fiscal year 20 in June with a surplus of about 1.2 million, we only returned a little under 200,000 of that to the surplus. The reason being is we held on to $1 million in the restricted part of the fund balance to account for what we see as a potential future liability with Granite Ridge. That is not something that has been settled at this point, but I think it's prudent to set money aside to prepare us for any kind of settlement that may come down in the future. And just so you're all aware, the total valuation, which helps make up part of the tax rate, is while the net valuation is up from 2019, we did account for a loss of $45 million in valuation from the power plant in setting this year's tax rate.
Okay. So, what I have here is, so as many of you know, I got this information. And since we have made the decision to have complete transparencies with the schools, and since the line share of the increase is really at the school level, I went and let them know last night that we would be discussing this today. Just so that we have perfectly clear clarification here, the increase is approximately 4.2% over the 1939. The school piece is 3% plus. The town piece is about 1%. And when they get their bill, because we billed out at 1939, we'll be building out at something around 20.20. It will look like almost a 7% increase from the July bill to the December bill. Not a 7% tax increase. It will just look like a 7% increase in the billing. Is that correct?
That's correct. When we bill in July, it is half of what the prior year's tax rate is. And then in December, it's made up between the difference.
So, the increase is 4.2%. From what you've all shared with me and what I shared with the schools last night is, is the school budget is up 2.7 million, yet their appropriations are up 3 million. And our budget was up about 850,000, and our appropriations were at 919,000. Of those pieces, 453,000 was from the collective bargaining agreements that were agreed to a town meeting in March. 94,000 was from benefits, and 60,000 was an increase in waste management. Is that all correct?
Yes.
So, what we're looking at is, now, what the schools did was, so that everybody's clear, is they took $400,000 and applied it already to lower their rate to the 1266. We, through the taxpayer relief fund, over this, we passed last year, we already put $200,000.
Correct.
Which brought us to the 475 that we're at now. So, I guess the question to the council is, is do we want to have any more money from the undesignated fund balance? This is our one and one and only opportunity to help the taxpayers out and lower the rate on the town side. We can't do anything to help the schools, but we can help lower the rate on the town side. That's the question to the council. Am I missing anything, anyone? So, that's what we're here to talk about. Yes, Tom?
Justin, what, our tax rate last year was 456.
Correct.
If we're at 475 now, how much would we have to contribute to keep it level at 456?
So, about 19 cents would be between 900,000 and 925,000.
Now, keep in mind, we've contributed 200 already.
Yeah. So, this would put you at 1 million to 1.1.
Now, to give you some sort of an idea, since 2016, we have returned just shy of $2 million to the taxpayers to reduce rate. So, we've been regularly giving the money back as we have the money to do it.
John?
What's the current balance?
About 5.5 million.
So, wait a minute, just jump.
Yeah, just want to make sure everybody knows that the reason why I'm not there is this is COVID-related. My family is fine, but this is a COVID-related reason why I'm on the phone tonight. So, anyway, I just had a question regarding the problem with the minimum that we have to maintain. What is the delta between what's, what the minimum that we have to maintain and what we have as a balance now?
So, based on our current policy, where it is just the town appropriations, we can use up to 3.7, almost 3.8 million.
But we don't, it's more of a catastrophic fund, so we really don't want to.
This is also, you have to keep in mind, is our main cash flow situation. So, to help us avoid taking out TANs, where in December, you look at it, we have about a five, $6 million bill due to the school. We have a 4.5, I want to say, about million-dollar bill due to the county, and our tax bills are not going out until later in December.
Yeah. And the other thing for folks to keep in mind is, is that the revenues on the school side are down $580,000, $581,000. And that we talked about with them last night is that, I didn't actually name the Granite Ridge as the taxpayer, but that we were seeing a drop in valuation there, and that could be directly attributed to the property tax revenues going down. Well, that's how they get funded, is through property tax revenues. So, well, Mr. Curro didn't disagree. So, I'm sure he would have if he thought so.
Yes.
So, it's up to us. If you want it, so why don't you give us some breakdowns? If we do 200 more, 400, 200, 300, 400, 500, give us an idea of what that does for us so that people can understand what it would save the taxpayers if we did something. Yes, Tom?
It would be my suggestion, and I don't want to short-circuit any discussion, but it would be my suggestion that, that if I look at the rates, the county tax rate is going down 2 cents. The state education tax rate is going up 2 cents, so that those both wash.
Yep.
If we, if we could keep our municipal tax rate level with 2019, and then make a suggestion that the school board make an effort to do the same thing, that would be, I think, a big step in the right direction for the taxpayers.
For this tax year?
For 2020.
Yeah, they, the school board can't, because they've already, they've already done their process. First off, they only have so much money in their fund balance that they can use. But they've already gone through their process of what to commit. And they committed somewhere between 350,000 and 400. It was somewhere around there. So, their, their rate is set now at that 1266. The only one that can be changed at this point is the towns.
We've already taken the step to have the departments come in at lower than default budget. The problem is, if we flatten the tax rate, we're just kicking the can down the road. And we're gonna, it's gonna be an all larger increase next year.
So, and with the thing.
Which, you know, probably isn't good fiscal prudent planning, anyway.
And the other thing to keep in mind with next year is, this year, our meals and rooms tax revenue went up because the state's on a biannual budget. I'm not a psychic. I can't tell you for sure, but I'm willing to bet next year it will not be going up.
More than likely, it will be going down.
Exactly. So, you'll be dealing with the increase from the tax rate, from putting whatever you decide to put towards it, as well as the decrease in revenues. So, you'll be looking at it a couple times.
I'd also mention that this tax rate includes a revenue source, a one-time revenue source from the COVID reimbursement funds, which we're unlikely to get next year. Now, there's, there's a lot of variables for next year. Congress and the president can pass a stimulus bill, and who knows what that does to the municipalities? You know, the, everything I've heard is that the municipalities could be receiving millions of dollars. But right now, that's pie-in-the-sky stuff. It's, it's on the table, but nothing is materialized.
Mr. Chairman, I've heard informally that, that as the new legislator, this legislation, legislature is at the state convene, they're gonna dig in and make, and try to make a 10% cut in the state budgets across the board.
But that, that's interesting, but I don't, I think we only can deal with what we have.
But, right, so I'm just saying that.
But what we're gonna, you know, well, we may, they may not send, you have, that could cause a bigger problem.
Right. And I think we, you know, I think to our credit, we, we kind of highlighted this last summer, that this was coming, and for people to start thinking about it and getting, setting expectations, if you will, that we were gonna have to do some really hard belt tightening.
Tom, could you describe belt tightening? What do you mean by that? I, I just would like to know what your idea of a belt tightening is compared to my idea, so that we're on the same page.
Well, I'll, I'll explain it this way. The government sometimes, at all levels, tends to have, tends to have an insatiable appetite for tax money. And what I think we've got to do at our level here, and also the state government has to do at their level, and the federal has to do it at their level, is to decrease the appetite of the, of the government under which they have authority. And appetite to spend money on, on certain programs, certain initiatives, personnel. In some cases, it requires reductions in personnel. So, that's.
So, when you're saying tightening your belt, you're not taking, you're, you are definitely gonna look at personnel, and you're gonna look at programs, and you're gonna look at these sort of things for the town? Is that, I just want to be sure I'm on the same page, because tightening my belt would mean, this year, I, I couldn't imagine anyone getting a raise.
Well, I, I think that, that what we're, for our, at our level, we'd be talking about the budget that begins next July.
But still, I mean, the forecast, the economic forecasters are saying that the businesses are not gonna feel any relief from this for the next three to four years. You have businesses, people who, who are laid off, thinking they were gonna have a job, aren't having a job to go back to. You have those sort of things going on, and those people are the people who are paying the taxes, and we're seeing, and we've signed off on a lot of those liens. And it's just, it's, it's these people who are paying for these other people to get raises and benefits that they're not getting, and they're losing, and in some instances, losing their homes. And this is, I mean, I know we talked about the AES thing, but I could have swore it was like 22 businesses that, that, or Granite Ridge, sorry. It will always be AES to me. Granite Ridge is, was one of 22 businesses that applied for abatements. I mean, I don't know how many of them went through. I don't know if we fought any of them, and how much that's gonna end up costing us, if we're gonna get that money, and projections on how many people are really gonna be able to pay their tax bill this December, considering all of the extensions on mortgage payments that the banks gave out are now coming to call, and they're having to pay a double mortgage.
I think we have pretty good data on, even in times that have even been much tougher than what we're right now, economic times, we have pretty good data as to what our collection rates are. I think it's somewhere in the high 90%.
Well, I, I think that there are way more people that are being hurt right now than you think.
So, one thing I will chime in with here is typically with mortgage payments, a lot of those mortgages pay the escrows to the town for the property tax rate. So, they won't be paying a tax on top of.
No, I'm saying when, they, they signed up to have their mortgages frozen. This month, in December, or not this month, next month, in December is when those freezes come off, and people have to pay double mortgage. They're not making it just a little bit or extending the life of the loan. They're saying, okay, you owe us from June, and you're gonna have to pay double for the next.
Yep.
Six months.
I think that a majority, and I can't speak for sure, but a lot of mortgages typically take on the taxes as part of the mortgage payment. So, that double payment will be to the mortgage company. They won't be double paying. If that made up.
I think some of the payments you got was because of escrow and people being in that, putting it in that way, not necessarily the people that write it separately. I don't know. I'd rather err on the side of caution.
Yep.
I would rather have a plan in place and take our time and talk about it, and have a plan in place that protects the people of this town that made this town what it is, and, and say, huh, look, when things worked out great, we didn't have to use that plan. But right now, I'm a little nervous. I'm very nervous.
I think this coming Saturday begins that discussion. What we're talking about tonight is really last year's, last year's.
Well, for me, the, the tax rate should be, it's 475, and it was 456. I think it should go down to 450.
Well, the only way to do that is to spend the fund balance.
We didn't have any problem spending it on luxury items that we wanted throughout the years, so I don't see why it should be an issue to spend it to help people through a hard time, the people who actually paid that money into that undesignated fund balance.
Well, that's why we're here tonight, to discuss that.
I'm just saying, that's my opinion. I mean, I'm not as eloquent as all of you guys, and that's fine, but.
And all due respect, just, I, I need to clarify for the record. We've been spending fund balance on things like roadway maintenance, cemetery maintenance, GIS. I just want to clarify.
Well, we spent it on a generator that we didn't need, Kevin.
A lot of people might think.
We spent it on a generator we didn't need.
Hey, hey, out of order.
Please don't interrupt.
Let him speak. He let you speak. Everyone else is speaking it one at a time.
All right, go ahead.
For clarification purposes, all fund balance expenditures are approved by the voters. We don't do that.
I understand that, John. I do understand that. But we are the ones, or the council, are the ones who put it on the ballot. And people see it, and they say, oh, it's zero tax impact. And they think it has no tax impact, when it, in fact, it truly does. So, it's, it's an, all in how somebody perceives it and wants to spin it to, 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 to present that project. And that's hither and tither. And yes, we did spend it on stuff that we may or may not have needed. But the fact that we could find these monies have came, have already come in, and to give people right now that are struggling, there are people who are paying their mortgages, social security, disability. These people didn't get cost of living increases. Most businesses didn't get cost of living. None of this has happened for the regular people who paid this money. And I think you have to think about that hard and long.
Well, one of, one of the things, Mr. Chairman, if I may, that we, that we talked about in this context just a few minutes ago, that we need to be conscious of, is the sawtoothing of the tax rate. We have to be careful that we don't artificially dip the tax rate, and then if we, and then have it spike back up next year. What that does, especially with people with escrow accounts, is the, the bank sees the tax bills going, sees your tax bill going down, and therefore lowers your, your mortgage payment, because you don't need as much of an escrow to go in. And then the following year, they see the tax bill go way up. And so then, what they do is they roll that into a much higher monthly payment to, to make up for an escrow balance that you're deficient in, which may be an over, it, it over-exaggerates these changes. And we have to be careful not to keep sawtoothing that and putting the, the individual taxpayer in distress with having their escrow payments going way up or down and back and forth. So, we, we, the best thing we can do is to try to smooth the tax rate, try to keep it as level as possible in order to keep the escrow payments level as possible. So, because even though the payments may be a little higher, if you know what it's gonna be, you can plan for it. If you don't know what it's gonna be, because it was artificially low in, at X point in time, at Y point in time, it's gonna be artificially high, and if you hadn't planned for that, that's, that's when it really hits you. That's when, that's when it affects your ability to now make your car payment, because your disposable income just went down by a couple hundred dollars a month or whatever. So, even though I earlier suggested that we, we lower our tax rate, it was in the context of the school board also lowering their rate if they could. Now that they, it looks like they can't, I, I would be, I guess it would be, it would not be my suggestion that the town try to take this and solve the, the whole community's problems, since we're only one, one-third, or maybe even less than one-third of, of the tax bill.
So, for clarification here, to give you a little bit of a breakdown, the school portion, we'll use round numbers. If you're paying $10,000 a year in taxes, $7,200 of that goes to the schools. If you're paying the town portion, I think that's at 2,400 on that, right?
I believe so.
So, if you take a million dollars out to take it down to 450, that would be a reduction of $14 a month, or $168.
So, based on the average assessed home right now in Lundary, I got it from your assessing department, it's $380,900. The current tax rate compared to the prior year tax rate will lead to a December bill increase of about $72. That's just for the town portion, not the school.
So, the question becomes is, if I use your chart here, and let's say we take out, if we take out, well, I'm saying, okay, let's just, as an example, let's say we did half. That would be $400,000 would cut the 19 cents in half, or actually, a little bit more than that, 450,000 would cut the 19 cents in, in half. That, that, that could be, that could be one suggestion. At a million dollars, it would take it down to just under, it would be 455, right? 455, 454. And again, I, you know, we've given $2 million back over the last four years.
I understand.
We already gave $200,000 back.
And I, I think that's good, but.
Well, I mean.
And I think the schools should be tightening their budget, too. I, I just want to be clear that this isn't me speaking to just us. And I know I'm the separate government, and they've got their own thing, but I really think that they need to hear that there are people out there that are really, really hurting, and they have to be really frugal this year, more so than any other year.
Well, I think you heard.
I just, I just wanted to be clear that I wasn't just focusing here. It was for all governments, including the library.
Well, you all authorized me to go.
I, I will, when we have that opportunity.
Well, you all authorized me to go tell them that, right?
And you did.
And I did.
I, I saw you. I saw you, but I was confused when you kept saying "we." I'm like, who's he talking about, the "we"? We.
We, 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 we are the.
Because I didn't know that you were, well, it doesn't matter, but I was like.
Well, you guys authorized me to go.
Yeah.
And tell them what we're doing about budgets. This is just a continuation of it.
But I didn't know what we discussed.
Well, we haven't discussed anything here yet.
Okay.
We haven't discussed our budget yet.
That's why I was confused. You, anyway, it doesn't matter.
We discussed here lowering, having default 2% or more below default.
Today?
No, we did that before, and that's when I was sent to the school board meeting. That's the direction that was given to the town for their budgets this year.
Let's not forget, the current budget is about, already about half spent, or about halfway through the current budget.
Right. This is for July 1 budget.
I understand.
All right. So, what do you want to do? We can do nothing.
I liked the last one you said, the million. So, that's my.
So, so Deb wants to give a million. What do you guys want to do?
So, one thing I will say is cash flow in December for the town will be an issue if we do that, and we may be looking at potentially taking out TANs, which cost the taxpayers interest for money that we haven't received yet.
Say that one more time. I didn't understand you or hear you very good.
So, if we do a million.
Right.
With the big bills we have coming up in December, and the fact that our tax bill is currently later, we could run into a cash flow. we could run into a cash flow issue. Right now, it looks like we should be all set. But if we take out a million, i- it changes things a good amount. And what the answer could be there is taking out a TAN or tax anticipation notice, which we then have to pay interest on because we don't have the money yet. We then pay it back once we get it. The other option is breaking CDs, which I already have inquiries out to our banks to see what the penalty is for that. I know that we don't actually pay a penalty, but we could lose all the interest, which we've already used to lower our tax rate, the interest from that money.
Well, I mean, I was going with the million going on. You're saying that usually people are paying, so.
All, all part of the, well, what we have to understand is, is that we tie money up. And we are the bank. So when the school calls and says, I want my five million dollars, we have to send it to them.
And that's the first of the month.
Justin, based on the information you just gave us and your projected cash flows, what is your suggestion on what we can give back to the taxpayers?
I would not go above five hundred thousand. I wouldn't do, I, I mean, I'm concerned about next year's tax rate. Because as I said, there's a lot of revenues that are gonna be decreasing.
Mr. Chairman. Justin, what would it, how much would it take for us to lower our, our tax rate increase?
It's a nine cent increase, which would take it to four sixty, four sixty-five.
That would be about between four fifty and four twenty-five.
Yeah, so he's got, now his chart here, he's got, um, zero eight nine, so it'd be about four, four hundred twenty-five thousand.
That's my recommendation. Let's, I would take it, I would take from, down from nineteen cents to nine cents, just below ten cents.
And just to be clear, whatever we decide here, next year, this comes right back. And just so everyone's aware, so next year, this is there again.
We have no idea what next year is gonna bring us, so with the new president and things.
Just, everyone's clear. We're, we're creating a spike for ourselves. With the understanding of knowing that we're still in negotiations with Granite Ridge. And there may be some additional valuation there that we may lose. Just to be clear.
And John, and John, we can't really, this is Joe Green. John, we can't really divulge what that dollar amount would be, right?
Well, we don't know what it is yet because we're in negotiations.
Right, I get you.
See, what, what, yeah, my understanding of how things work with the utilities is, is it's really based on more on their valuation. There's a, a component of their valuation that is based on market rate. I mean, basically how much money they make. And, um, and we're still working through that with the attorneys.
So how would it look if we went to, you said what, five?
Four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Four hundred and twenty-five? Well, what if we were looking at seven hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Well, actually.
What would that bring it to?
The interesting thing is we're already at six twenty-five because we already gave two hundred back.
Well, I'm not including that, so.
I understand. And I understand what you're saying, but.
I, I don't know about you guys, but literally I am getting ten to twenty calls a week, fifty emails a week from residents in this town who are just telling me what's going on, what, what's gonna happen. Because they hear these things, you know, and Tom, the red flags and the red flags and they're asking me. And I just tell them that things are tight and they, I, I have a hard time looking someone in the face and saying that there were no other options. I, I just really want to look under every single rock. I feel bad. And these are seniors and these, these are seniors.
Fiscally responsible for everyone in town. I get what you're saying. Whatever we do here, it's gonna roll over into next year. The sawtooth is gonna go up. I mean, I, I would love to give a million dollars, love to give a million dollars back to the taxpayers. But I, I just can't, all we're gonna do is just kick that can down the road, Deb. I mean, this is a tough one.
I understand what you're saying.
And he just told us the cash flow, he's saying five hundred and that's, that's even, that's even spotty.
At first I hear it's good, then I don't hear it's good. And this is what I talked about in June. What we need to talk about, one of the line items, there was like nine hundred thousand dollars or eight hundred thousand dollars just in raises this year.
No, it was four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, which was all done through collective bargaining agreements.
I understand.
All approved by the voters.
I understand, but there's always a bargaining, there's always a negotiation. And I, I mean.
Federal labor laws that have to be closely followed.
I understand that, John, but there's always a negotiation. They're human beings. They understand that people are hurting.
There is a, there is a federal labor and state labor laws and process we have to follow. I, there, this is an inappropriate time to be talking about any type of labor contracts.
I think at this point, for this, for this year, we, I said, this year's half spent.
Yeah.
And those contracts are already negotiated and locked in.
That's right.
We don't, I think that even bringing the subject up could be a unfair, uh, labor bracket.
Well, to me, nothing is off the, off the table when we're worrying about people keeping their houses.
The only thing that is on the table right now, or could be on the table, is reduction in force if you wanted to save money. If we, if you want.
And that's a slippery slope.
If, if we want to go in and try to change, uh, the labor contract, I think we've, that's, that's, that's.
There should be other places that we should be able to look. You know, Kevin was able to find the money for the fire station. So obviously there's gotta be monies there. Um, you know, there's gotta be monies within the budget that can help to help these people out there that are gonna be losing their homes.
We're gonna have that discussion on Saturday, Deb.
Start talking about that till Saturday.
That happens on Saturday.
That discussion plays into this.
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't, Deb. This, what we're talking about is.
Setting the tax rate.
I understand.
What we're talking about right now is what was.
We're setting the tax rate. We're talking about the million versus the four hundred, right?
The budget is in place. It was voted on and approved by the voters. The budget we're talking about for next year is, we start doing it in November. Right now, we're talking about can we give the taxpayers any relief in December? That's the discussion. Can we do that? You know?
Then I would like to see it be at the lowest possible that you could give these people.
Please, please clarify.
Explain that to me.
Oh.
The lowest number that we could get it to, that you feel comfortable with, with what you think may or may not come in. Right? That's a fair question.
It's not about, it's not about, excuse me, Justin, it's not about what may come in. It's about the timing of when it comes in.
Correct.
The tax bills are going out later this year because DRA set our rate a lot later. And so there are cash flow concerns because of when the taxes are going to be paid. That's the concern.
If the bill was due December first, second, like it normally was, cash flow would not be a concern.
So everyone in DRA is still working from home. So they're delayed in sending out their rates.
Right now, it's, my concern is we have the school district payment early and I'm working with Peter to break that up. And we have the four point five, I want to say maybe four point two million dollar county payment due the fifteenth-ish.
So because they were late, we're, we're being kinda tied, right? But if they weren't late, would we be able?
He said yes.
To do that. I, I just want to hear it.
You would be able to. I wouldn't recommend it, but you would be able to.
So Justin, I'm gonna ask again.
I mean, you are able to now. Again, I wouldn't recommend it, but you are able to.
And how late do you think it will be? Like, so how many days late is it? So like, what are we talking? A month within the cash flow, a couple of weeks? A week? Like, do you know what I mean? Like, how long do you think it would take to get the cash flow? I mean, I know that it's possible to, to have conversations with these people and tell them exactly what happened. And lots of times they'll forgive you and waive you because of the COVID. Cause I saw it happen someplace else.
So the earliest we could probably get a tax rate out would be what, Monday? I mean, a tax bill out would be Monday?
Probably, yeah. And that's.
So it would be sixteen days late.
Okay, so you're talking sixteen days for cash flow and these people have no forgiveness within their.
We get charged, we had to, last year, we had to drive it up because they wouldn't take an ACH the next day.
Well, but that was a different element though. That wasn't a COVID world. I just know that maybe it's, it's worth, well, to me, it's worth looking under every stone to help everybody. And that's just how I feel.
That's, that's Saturday.
Okay. But, so I'm still sticking with we, we should give the most amount of discount that we can possibly give.
Justin, I want to ask the question again. Based on your cash flow projections and what we have in front of us, what's the bottom line? What would you recommend to the council?
What would I recommend or what is the most you can give? They're two different things.
What would you recommend?
I would recommend the two hundred thousand that we've already given. I, I don't, I am more concerned about people next year. Seventy-two dollars on the average house right now, it's awful, it's terrible. COVID, however, has allowed for forgiveness of interest and things of that nature to occur on tax bills.
To tax bills, but not to the people who have an escrow.
So we can't impact when they pay their escrow. Their escrow companies pay us. I, I have no say over when the escrow company requests a payment.
There's no forgiveness there. They're, they basically tell you one and done. You get one grace period, that's it. Unless of course you're HUD and then there's some government overseas. But if you're a private mortgage, you're a private bank, they're not giving you any lever, any, any, any leverage. They're going right into foreclosures and forbearances.
Chairman, you want me to make a motion?
So next, next year, looking at it with some basics, if we were to keep it at the current tax rate we have, next year's increase will be over a hundred dollars. If we keep it at the current ta- if we keep it at the four fifty-six. That's what I'm more concerned about. It's a larger amount.
Why? You said we had an opportunity to cut that down on Saturday.
You do, yes, but.
In the future, nobody else.
We're getting one point three million right now in roughly one point three million in meals and rooms. I don't know what that's gonna be next year. That could drop down to five hundred thousand and then we're looking for seven hundred thousand. That's my concern. I'm more concerned about how bad it can be next year, I guess, is my worry.
So that means we should be thinking about this year's budget really intensely.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
You still there, Joe?
Yes, I am.
Just checking. Anything further? Any more questions? What do you want to do?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we reduce the town portion of the tax rate by four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I second the motion.
Motion on the floor. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Motion passes for one. So that everyone understands, that will reduce the town portion of the tax bill to four dollars and sixty-six cents. Which will bring the percentage down to about four percent, about four point one.
Of an increase?
On the total increase?
I do not know that off the top of my head.
Yeah, I, neither do I.
Tom, did you say four twenty-five?
Yeah.
So in total, the council gave six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, that puts the, that's. So in the last five years, about two point four million dollars has been returned to the taxpayers to reduce, for taxpayer relief. So, uh, what do we come up with? Did you run the math? I got Joe on my phone. I could run it too.
Four percent.
So we go from four point two percent to four percent. So the bill will look something more like, you know, between a little bit over six and a half. Six and a half, six point seven?
About ballpark.
All right. So, um, I would urge you to, um, attend the meetings and go to the school board meetings, go to the budget meetings. Yes, Joe?
John, just so I, we have it clear, uh, for, uh, the spike, because I'm not actually there seeing people and, and Justin was a little bit difficult to, to hear. Um, so the spike that he's talking about, that we have to really discuss or, or be mindful about on Saturday, what, what, uh, what is that number? Now.
He, he, he doesn't know.
That's my concern is that we don't know what it's going to be.
So what he's saying is, is that, you know, okay, for example, we got one point three million dollars in rooms and meals. I mean, everybody in the whole state can figure out that people are going out to eat less and hotels are nowhere near as occupied as they were. So that, that dollar number is likely to be something less than one point three million dollars. He doesn't know what that number is gonna be.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add also, another way to look at this, Joe, is that if you, uh, take whatever the tax impact is for the budget that we're gonna start creating this coming Saturday, you, we just, if we just took nine cents off the tax rate, you gotta add that back in to what do we do on Saturday? And beyond, because that was artificially lowered. Those expenditures are still there. We just artificially lowered it with, uh, money from the rainy day fund or the unexp- unfunded balance, unexpended balance. So, um, so that, that's the spike. There's a nine cent spike that's gonna be added to whatever we decide to spend and whatever the voters decide to spend in March.
Yeah, and, and the reason why I thought that was important to know is because, say for instance, that we need to take a look at, you know, what we're proposing on the budget, right? And now we also have to think about how we're going to cover this dollar amount if we really want to think about it, you know, uh, for next year, uh, how are we gonna take whatever, take whatever, uh, declines that we're gonna be budgeting and then also cover this, uh, percentage as well. And that's why I wanted to know what the number was and, uh, and, and at least go into it mindful about what we just talked about tonight.
Well, and keep in mind several other things. One is between the town and the schools, one million, approximately one million twenty-five thousand dollars has been given back to the taxpayers to lower the tax rate. So the tax rate would have been another twenty cents higher than what it will come out at. Based on the school's contribution as well. The other piece to keep in mind is, is that the, um, is that the school budget, uh, they, they did not commit one way or the other going into their budgeting. So, um, I don't know what they're going to do, whether they're going, how they're going to go about budgeting because they did not commit. So, um, I only can speak for the town side.
Mr. Chairman, another way to look at this, Joe, and this is the real unpleasant side of our business, is that that amount of money, four hundred and twenty-five thousand that we just took out, is the equivalent of three firefighters or three policemen fully loaded.
And, and, and that's, and that's a great analogy and, uh, you know, obviously that's not gonna, that's not gonna be a cut that we, we would ever even think about. But my point is that when we look at across all of these, uh, departments, we have to try to be mindful of what we just did and try to cover that as well. I mean, uh, I, I guess that's kind of the whole, whole point of what we're talking about and, uh, you know, and, and I just want to make sure that the, my brothers and sisters of the council understand that when we're going in on Saturday.
Oh, yeah.
So I'll just try, just try to get a number, a number there, I guess, that, that's the point.
Right, because, because let's face it, we are in the personnel business. We, the vast majority of our money that we spend is people expenses. And, and if you're gonna make significant cuts in the budget, it's gotta be people. I mean, that's the, that's the, uh, the way it goes. And that's, like I said, like I said, that's the unfortunate, uh, dark side of, of what we're talking about, but, uh, let's keep that in mind.
Joe? I have, I have, I have one more question, John. Um, I've been out in the park a lot the whole time, just staying out here. Is there something that I have to, um, I have to sign?
There's a, um, you don't have to do it today. You can do it on Saturday. It's a proclamation.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Is there anything further?
Motion adjourned? Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or adjourned. We'll see you.